Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Counsel Freeman?
Here.
Counsel Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
Counsel Anderson?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Hernandez.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to let the council know we'd like to make a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. First, under Special Orders of Business, we would like to add a Constitution Week proclamation. So are there any objections to that change? And the other thing is I would like to switch the two items under Section 8, A and B, so Wayne won't have to spend quite as much of the evening with us, although he is always welcome to do so. Any concerns or objections to the change in the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go then into Special Orders of Business. We will go into the Constitution proclamation, but I want to take a moment. There's been some very major events, both nationally and locally. We are all extremely, and many people painfully aware, of the fires that are burning across Oregon. I want to thank all the people who are first responders, who are working on all 25-plus fires in Oregon right now, who are giving everything they've got to get those under control and to save lives, as well as property where they can. The support that they've gotten from the communities around them and across the state have been what I would absolutely expect from our communities, and that's been overwhelming. So I would encourage folks to go on the websites, be encouraging to them as they put their lives and their on hold, and occasionally on the line, for their fellow man, and also watch for opportunities to help. They're posting online where they need help and how they need it, and I would encourage folks to do that. The folks who are in the path of, were in the path of Hurricane Harvey are now in, you know, watching the waters hopefully recede, and again, there's opportunities for us to be very helpful in practical ways for our friends and neighbors in the great states of Texas and Louisiana. I would also ask that people please keep in their hearts and minds and prayers the folks who are now in the path of Hurricane Irma. Some of our Salem Kaiser volcanoes just went home to the Dominican Republic and Puerto Rico. So they are there, as well as many of us who have friends and family in the path of this oncoming hurricane. So once again, we have an opportunity to serve both in practicality and in encouragement to one another, and I want everyone to know, folks who are listening, that we are keeping you in our thoughts and prayers, and we will do everything we can as a community to be supportive. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add? All right. Thank you very much. So with that, I would like to go to a special proclamation that we have for Constitution Week, and I would like to thank Ruby Pennalone for bringing this to our attention. Ruby, do you want to come on down and tell us a little bit about Constitution Week, and then I will read the proclamation? If you both would introduce yourselves and your city of residence?
I'm Ruby Pennalone, and I live in Kaiser. I've been here, what, 40 years, so?
I'm Charlene Demond, and I'm currently living in Salem. I was a citizen of Portland, Oregon for over 60 years.
Welcome to the valley.
Thank you.
Floor is yours, if you want to tell us about Constitution Week.
Well, I kind of wanted to tell you about how the Daughters of the American Revolution got started. It was started in, on October 11th, 1890, and the women felt they, well, they desired to express their patriotic feelings and were frustrated by the exclusion from the men's organization, so they just went ahead and formed their own, and so it's a much bigger group now than the men's group. And their objective has always been historical preservation to the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence, and educational, to carry out the injunction of Washington in his farewell address to the American people, to promote as an object of primary importance institutions for the general diffusion of knowledge, thus developing and enlightening public opinion, and that's one thing you hear a lot about, public opinion. And then patriotic, to cherish, maintain, and extend the institutions of American freedom, to foster true patriotism and love of country, and to aid and security for mankind, all the blessings of liberty. And so that is what our DAR does, and so right now they have over 180,000 members from 3,000 chapters in all 50 states and Washington, D.C., and also they have one, a chapter in New Zealand, and Australia, and England, several in England, and Rome, and so a lot of different places that were women that have ancestors that was in the American Revolution are now living, so.
All right. Well, thank you so much for sharing with us about the Daughters of the American Revolution and the DAR. My grandmother was a member many, many years ago, and most importantly, for the ongoing work that you're doing to make sure that we are knowledgeable about our own constitution. I want to show what Ruby has brought for us, and that Paula or some of our staff may would like to pass out to young visitors coming to the city hall. We have copies of the Constitution, and for people who think it's a huge book, it's really not. It's just got huge ideas. Also, some fun pencils. As school's starting, we still need number-two pencils, right?
Yeah.
So this will be great for some of our young students. And I appreciate you bringing those and encouraging us to read and understand this very important document. What I'd like to do is read now the proclamation and then present it to you.
Okay.
Whereas, "It is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Kathy Clark, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Kaiser in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kaiser, Oregon, to be affixed this 5th day of September 2017." Thank you. Thank you very much. Want to get a picture? That's okay, I think we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. A little closer.
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We also received some of the, there's all sorts of fun ways to study the Constitution, so there are also some puzzles and things that folks are encouraged to go online and download as well, as well as reading the document. This takes us then to committee reports, and we have Item 5A, which is a recommendation from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for Appointments to the Kaiser Planning Commission and the Mid Willamette Valley Community Development Partnership. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met August 17th to review applications and review, and interview candidates for openings on two city committees. The committee is recommending the following applicants for appointment. For the Kaiser Planning Commission, Crystal Wilson, position number four, and Gary Whalen, position number five, and for the Mid Willamette Valley Community Development Partnership, John Morgan, term expiring February 2021, and has recommended city council accept this recommendation from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Crystal Wilson, position number four, and Gary Whalen to position number five of the Kaiser Planning Commission, and John Morgan to the Mid Willamette Valley Community Development Partnership, his term expiring February 2021.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the Volunteer Coordinating Committee recommended appointments, Crystal Wilson to position four, Gary Whalen, position five, on the Kaiser Planning Commission, and John Morgan to the Mid Willamette Valley Community Development Partnership. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And thank you to those volunteers who are going to spend the time doing the work of the Planning Commission and the Community Development Partnership. Much, much appreciated. Public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing scheduled tonight, and that is the proposed text amendment relating to landscaping requirements, Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.309, continued from August 21st. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? I don't have anybody signed up for public testimonies tonight. All right. We will move on then into that public hearing, and this will be to continue from the hearing of August 21st, the proposed text amendment relating to landscaping requirements, Kaiser Development Code to Section 2.309, and I would like to reopen the public hearing. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor and counsel. We opened this hearing at the last meeting and continue tonight to see if there's any additional testimony and get any questions answered that the council may have. Although there were several changes, there was not a lot of discussion about most of the proposed amendments. I do want to remind counsel that if you have other issues other than the issue with the 1% in the art, you know, you need to be sure not to lose the forest for the trees there if there's some other issue. But the issue the council talked about the most was the 1% issue, and the overall, and then the sub-issue there is the public art and how that would work. So what I did is, and find the section now, I made some changes there, and that is on page four of the code section, and that is 2.309.04, sub-E, 1% for amenities, and indicated, and I took out public art but added it on down further on, as you can see, so that it talks about 1% of the total cost for commercial industrial building for acquisition and installation of amenities. Those can be site furniture, water features, or other features intended to be available by the general public during the hours the business is open. I added that to make sure people understood that, you know, if the business is closed, you wouldn't have the public on it necessarily, and that it's not actually a public easement. But then added that at the property's owner's option, the owner may propose art for approval through the public art program, and that the value of the permanent art easement and the artwork shall be credited against this requirement. So the way that would work is if somebody had, and I can't do math very well, but let's say their 1% was $10,000, it was a hundred thousand dollars, does that make sense? No. It'd be a million, right? See, I told you I can't do math. So if the requirement was $10,000 and the artwork and the art easement was valued at $5,000, they would only be required to put additional $5,000 in to meet this requirement. So those are some of the changes I looked at doing. I'm not sure if those match up with what council had or not. Generally, the idea is if you don't have any other questions, the council has the option of making these amendments or directing us to come back with an ordinance, either with the 1% provision, the whole provision or not, and then if you want that provision, whether or not you want the public art option and whether you want it like the way I drafted it. But I wanted to turn it over to Nate before we had any other questions, because I think he has some additional comments.
So I did want to clarify a little bit about what this 1% is. Though we've used the 1% for art as kind of a basis as to where the concept came from, it is not a 1% for art program. The actual, the discussion in the Planning Commission and the option to be able to contribute to our public art program was in response to our dear and prominent business owner on the Planning Commission, who basically expressed some concerns about having to, he was okay with the concept, he understood the value of what we're talking about. This paying attention to our community fabric and our quality of life was not his concern. His concern was to be able to make a requirement to install a public facility, and then ongoing maintenance and all of the rest of that, and those costs that may be. So he was, he suggested that we offer as an option for this 1% of amenity as participation in the public art program, and then the obligation would be satisfied, and it would be much more palatable for a business owner. And so that's where that came from, that whole process of getting the public art involvement into it was as a matter of flexibility for business owners, giving them yet another option of how they would meet this requirement. The other, only other issue I did want to bring up was there was a question raised at the last hearing about, does this apply to multifamily? And I indicated that under the current language and under our current development code, I would interpret it that it would apply to multifamily. But in having additional conversation, we feel it would be appropriate for the council to give specific direction as to whether you felt that as a policy direction should apply to multifamily or should it not. Part of the reason that, well, it basically goes into the structure of how our development requirements are in the code, but we feel it would be wise for you to issue that as an inclusion as to the policy, whatever way you would choose to have that go.
Okay.
So that's, those are the two points I wanted to raise.
So that will be a discussion point when we have a motion on the table?
Right.
Okay.
And again, this is, we have, over the years, we've established a lot of standards through the River Road Renaissance program. It wasn't just separated sidewalks, but it was design features. It was also the entire concept, which we've invested heavily in our community. It was to make sure that we are all paying attention to the level of improvements that we have on River Road. The most recent examples, the, for example, the Ware Mart example, there was, because it was deemed to be an interior remodel by the structure of our code, there was absolutely no upgrading of the parking lot. There was no amenities whatsoever that were created for the community. And that was a two-and-a-half million, is a two-and-a-half million dollar project, and there is absolutely nothing that is coming from that project that would be raising the level of our quality of life in our community, other than, yes, we're all very excited that it's here. So it's basically those kinds of things that we want additional structure in our code to be able to say, you need to be part of this community, and you need to be contributing to this community, not just simply gathering a profit from it, so.
All right. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a clarification, Nate or Shannon, I'm not sure which, because we did discuss this at length last meeting, the, it's a suggestion, and you give them like a list of suggestions, and if they choose, if they choose art, then it goes through the Art Council to separate that from, okay. But if they don't choose art, you're saying that 1%, would that go back in? Where does that money go? Or do they reinvest it back into something like landscaping?
Well, our preference would actually be that they create amenities for the community, such as benches, site furniture, additional landscaping, more than just a few junipers in a tree.
Right.
So that's the reason we wanted it flexible, is to give them the option of, how are you going to contribute to this community?
And that's why you took out in the beginning, the art from the beginning, from that list, so it's not a requirement?
I didn't.
But they could choose it and then come back to the Art Committee for approval.
Right. Exactly.
So it means marketing codes and makes everyone in the community happy, right?
That is, that's exactly right.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Any other questions on the staff report? Counsel Herrera.
First of all, I appreciate the flexibility for the businesses on that 1%, I think that's cool. Just out of curiosity, on some of these requirements, as far as buffering goes, how do you know, like this is, something red, like it's got to be so six feet tall within a year? Now, do you guys actually go back and, I can see the planning, you know, no more than 15 feet, but how do you establish that?
Well.
It's got to be so, within so many years.
Sure.
I read something about a year, it's got to be set height.
So what we have created and what we've tried to rely upon is industry standard. So that's why it gives us the tools to be able to say, you can't just put in a little whip of a tree.
Yeah, and say, call it good, yeah.
And call it good. And so that's, that's just the tool that we have to, when we review the permit and we review their landscaping plan, we look at the sizes and the species. We know by standard how fast certain trees grow and how big it needs to be when you put it in.
Makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Also, just one more clarification. The businesses are, in addition to the 1% for establishing them, they are also responsible for the maintenance of them, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that too. Thanks.
So my understanding of a lot of this is to make sure that the established businesses or the established properties, when they are redone, will have to come to the same standard as new, new construction does, so we have a consistency that is along the lines of our River Road Renaissance standards that we've already embedded into the code. So we're just making sure we have that more consistently along River Road.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the staff report? Counsel Anderson.
Sorry, just popped into my head here. I wanted to make sure I was clear on something. So we have certain standards presently for new construction, right? Okay. How much, how many, what is the possibility for commercial, industrial, new construction or, yeah, new construction along River Road right now? At all.
If I may, do you mean redevelopment? Because it would be redevelopment. You're not talking bare ground only.
Well, let's start with bare.
Oh.
Bare ground.
So bare ground, we, actually, there's a surprising amount of bare ground on River So granted, it's not the majority, it's not even a large minority, but there is a surprising amount of bare ground. There's, by, well, I could go down the list. So we've actually taken, as part of the River Road Renaissance project, we identified several projects, future projects, that would be both an inclusion of new development and redevelopment. And there's a large number on that map. So, but percentage-wise, new development would be a minority. It is certainly not something, though, that's out of the possibility. By far, what we're talking about is redevelopment, and quite honestly, that's one of our biggest concerns. As we drive down River Road, it's those older and less well-maintained properties that kind of affect the general, I'm trying to be careful how I'm saying this, affect the general flavor of what we have on River Road. And so it's as those properties become developed, that's when we want some tools to be able to say, you got to give us a parking lot tree, you've got to give us something that is contributing to the community.
Why is that not covered under the landscaping requirements?
It is, but currently the landscaping requirements exempt interior remodels. That's, that's why Windco, because they left those, they didn't leave all four walls, but because they constructed within the footprint of the existing, it was considered as nothing more than a remodel, and they were completely exempt. And so I can't tell you how many conversations we had with that corporation to say, it would really be nice, it would really be helpful, it would really be, and the bottom line was, is it legally required of us or is it not? So.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you. Another point of clarification. What happens in the consideration where, for example, using Ware Mart, they don't own that property. They're, well, they bought this actual store, but the whole parking lot and there and surrounding is, belongs to the developer, the mall developer. Or even if you want to say a house on, in a business, and you wanted to rent a business from someone, let's say, or, it could go with a lot of different scenarios. Are you still requiring the same requirement of the business moving in and leasing from that? Or buying that building, or how, I mean, see what I'm saying, when the property belongs to someone else?
Well, it would be triggered by the permit process. Now, just to be clear on what your question is, so Ware Mart does not own the entire development. They own their, their property.
Right.
So their, their remodel would have been triggered on their property.
Right.
It would not have triggered on the other properties, and we wouldn't have all gone to the post office and said, hey, folks. So, but as far as the lease or not arrangement, those, since we don't have standing in their agreements or, you know, it is up to them to figure out what they would have to do in their lease agreement with the underlying property owner.
So it's not something we enforce to businesses who are coming in and leasing or not?
Well, it would, if they're, it'd be triggered by the permit process. So, and we don't evaluate whether they're a lessee or whether they're a fee simple property owner. I mean, that's really not part of what we're talking about. We're talking about, just as the building code requires so much ADA access, so much energy conservation requirements, all of those things are triggered by the building permit process, and this would simply be one more thing that would be triggered by that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
I'm sorry, one thing popped into my head, so I apologize for that. The 1% section that you have, subsection that you have in here, is that presently in our development code for construction?
No, it is not.
So is that, so is this not a new, this is new, then? Is it not?
This is, this is new, yes.
Okay, so I'm a little confused then. You said that for new development or remo, or not remodels, but redevelopment, that there is presently some sort of a requirement similar to this, or is there not?
Well, if you're referring to, similar to what we, the standards that we created in the River Road Renaissance, is that what you're saying? So I'm a little unsure exactly of the question, so I'll give it a stab. This is a new provision that we don't currently have in our code, but it applies to any, any new construction as well as remodel. So it applies across the board. As far as this is a standard, what we're talking about is, if you remember, the River Road Renaissance project, we used their urban renewal funds to create such things as the whole intersection improvement at Lock Haven and River, all of the, all of the infamous bollards, the water feature, all of that landscaping, those were, those were design features that we basically paid for. Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to say, these are the standards that we have implemented in our community, and we want them, those existing standards, applied across the board.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
And I'm not sure Counsel Anderson, follow up on what your question was, but the 1% is new for everything. I think what Nate was referring to before that you got hung up on is-
Yep.
hung up on is, right now, if somebody comes in and does an expansion of their building, then the current landscaping requirements apply. So you have to do everything that's in the current landscaping requirements, which is probably more than when they originally built the building 30 or 40 years ago. If somebody comes in right now and says, we're doing this major remodel, but it's the same footprint, then they don't have to do anything. That's what the change is.
But the notion beyond like planting trees or what have you.
The 1% part, yeah, that's, that is all new.
All of that, that's brand new, right?
Right.
No, okay. Thank you.
And the scope of that then would be proportional to the size of the project, you know, based on the dollar value that 1% would be from, you know, a little bit more here versus a larger piece, such as what we have at, uh, I'm thinking River Road, um, and, uh, not Shamaa, but just a little bit past that, that, uh, that little shopping center where All Stars is, it has the nice benches and so forth, because they did it all, if you did something like that all at once, then you can join up and you can do something a bit bigger and something nicer.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on the staff report or staff information? I would open it up to anybody who would like to testify on this issue, since it is a public hearing. All right. Is there anything else that we need before we close the public hearing?
No, not if there's any, any other questions.
Seeing none, that will go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons, you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the 1% provision with the public art option to exclude multifamily.
Second? Yes, we moved and seconded that the Kansas City Council direct staff to prepare a, let me get back to that page. Do I have your language? Okay. The ordinance for adopting the proposed text amendment relating to landscaping requirements with the exclusion of multifamily in the 1% requirement. Discussion. Counsel Anderson?
Thanks. Um, I appreciate the exclusion for multifamily. One of the, one of the concerns I, I had when we, this first came up at our last meeting was the impact specifically on multifamily. Real, I'm very concerned about the, with warehousing costs are, are now, or they're likely to go. I would be really concerned with this being applied to that. Um, I do have an overall concern with this entire proposal and specifically on sub E on page, page eight of our handout, number four here, with respect to the whole 1% for amenities. Um, I'm sorry, that's, I, I think that's where, where it's a mandate that we're imposing on businesses. And I, we've got lots of other requirements with respect to landscaping that is contained within pretty much the bulk of this 2.309.04. This is kind of completely different than that, in my opinion, but I, I'm very concerned with the overall mandate on businesses. This is going to be a new cost that we're going to be requiring, not just on River Road, but throughout, uh, throughout the city. That's a concern that I have there. Furthermore, the concern with, now we're going to have, okay, we've, a requirement that a property owner is going to have to solve this regardless of whether they're constructing, reconstructing, refurbishing, remodeling, or altering anything in their building. Uh, that's, but then now they're going to be responsible for the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance of that. I'm concerned about that. I'd also have a little bit of, or not a little, a bit of a concern about potential liability. Somebody, I mean, that's in all likelihood, you're going to have that on somebody's property and nonetheless, but you know, depending on the type of amenity that is installed, there could be an issue there. But it's just, you know, for me, it really comes down to the overall mandate of a new cost on businesses. And that's just not something that I can support. I would support the, the rest of the, um, the, the additions or proposed language without section E in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the discussion. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Bruce has some good, or excuse me, Counselor, uh, Counselor Anderson has some good points. But I'd like to, I, I think I would like to just, you know, state for the record that, you know, Oregon with, we've got so much going on that's working against our small businesses. And I really love the fact that, for example, Ware Mart chose Kaiser. I think we worked really hard to get them here. I realize that's not a factor in a decision here, but I think, I'd love to see more, more Ware Mart, more technical, more, more businesses. And I, and I, I want to, Kaiser to be an optimal choice for that. And I'm, I'm fearful that if we, if we require and mandate a fee that we're not going to attract those businesses. And so for that reason, I'll be a no. I just think it doesn't support our local business. And I'm, I'm really wanting to see their businesses grow and thrive right now and, and come out of the recession that we just had. And, and to help them to choose Kaiser. So for that reason, I would be a no.
Counsel Reed?
I, uh, just, I, I think that this, this whole proposal is really consistent with our, our, our pride spirit and volunteerism kind of motto. You know, I, I liked what Nate said about these businesses contributing to Kaiser in a meaningful way, rather than just making private, uh, profit off of them. And I think that's a really important thing. We expect our citizens to all contribute to the livability and the, um, the quality of life in Kaiser. And I think that it is fair to expect our businesses to do the same. And for that reason, I would support this.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? Counsel Ferrera?
Yeah, I think Counselor Anderson has some good points there. But again, it all falls on what you want for your community, in my, my view. And I think that the standards that we now have or that we're getting, they, they, they keep us at a certain level. And I do understand the, the extra money or whatever it would cost for businesses, but I, I join with Laura and, and the, um, the continuity of our, our community and what we want, our expectations, what we want. And that's kind of what we project in Kaiser. So I, I do understand that. So that's my two cents. But as long as we don't go back and tell them exactly how many, overall, I think it's, uh, it's feasible, I think. So I, I would support it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Freeman?
I have the, I think I said it last time at public hearing, but I had the opportunity to attend the planning commission in the absence of Counselor Parsons. And, and the planning commission did give this a lot of consideration. And one of our planning commission members that Nate was referring to earlier does have a business on River Road, was very concerned as a business owner of having a bench or something on his property that someone could potentially have some liability, get hurt, but really did support the 1% into art. So as a business owner, I don't have to put something on my property to maybe have the potential liability. Um, but I do have the opportunity then to better the community in another way. So, so it may not be on their specific business property, but it is enhancing our community overall. And I think that is from a small business owner right here on River Road. So can see the value in that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. Just a follow up. I, I just want to reiterate, as we consider this carefully, because I think we'll look back on it and, and maybe even question ourselves if, I, I strongly feel that if we, if we implement something like this, 1% doesn't sound like a lot. And to a lot of small businesses, it's really not. I'm very small business. 1% doesn't, wouldn't hurt me very much. But if that would, 1% to somebody like Ware Mart at $25,000 would have been a deal breaker for them, we would have lost them. Who else are we, are we thinking that, if we're, if we're not thinking now forward, who, who could we potentially lose in the future that we need to, you know, in Kaiser, restaurants, things like that? They, they do deal in bigger money. And, and so for that reason, I just, I really want to throw out there just to rethink, you know, hurting the, hurting the, the potential of, you know, losing the future business, because I think that could have been a deal breaker with Ware Mart, given the conversations that, that, that were had. So just my two cents for, not my 1%, but my two, my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. I really feel it's important for us to continue to embed the values of River Road Renaissance into our development code. That was something that was extremely visionary and well thought out by business owners and residents of this community. We've gone through the process over the last several years of embedding that into our development code, so that when businesses come to town, that's a given. This is what we expect from the business community when we are developing properties. So we have not only the structures to conduct business, but we have also created the community, which includes all of the physical attributes that make a Kaiser a unique and beautiful and attractive place. So I really believe it's important to make sure that our development code reflects Kaiser values. And I believe River Road Renaissance is deeply important to that. Having a dollar amount, I think, helps businesses understand that this is, they are going to be investing in here. We already know that they do. The many, many businesses in, on River Road have already invested far more than this when they've redeveloped properties. We don't have the money to give them now like we did with the grant program, but it demonstrated to the businesses what River Road Renaissance could be and should be, and now is part of what Kaiser is. So going forward, I believe it's, I feel it's important to make sure that businesses coming in have, understand that that's what it's going to take to be a part of our community, invest in the community, invest in not only the look and the, the amenities that enhance the livability of Kaiser, but it's going to help them as well. Because art on River Road, the beautification of River Road has turned into profit for businesses on River Road. Well-kept properties, attractive properties encourage profitable businesses to come here and stay. When they feel welcome, when they feel that they've created a nice space for people to come, people will come and do business with them. I think it's a real plus for the businesses and it's a plus for the community, which is why I support it. With the multifamily, I felt it was important to, I completely concur with the motion to remove that, because we already have so much buffering and landscaping requirements and other things that go with creating that kind of livable space around a multifamily development. You know, the days of, you know, just throw up a couple barracks and, you know, call it good are long gone. That's not how we want to create livable spaces and a sense of community in Kaiser, either in our residential areas or along River Road. So I feel very strongly that that not be in there at this time. Counsel Ryan?
Just a question to your statement, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate the River Road Renaissance and all the work that went into that. And I'm not sure if comparing it at this point is a fair comparison. And with my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but River Road Renaissance is where the city stepped up and did a matching grant program and equally invested back into the landscape and the beautification of that business. Am I correct? Is that, is that, am I remembering that correctly?
No, it was actually a 100% investment in businesses that wanted to do upgrades in front of their facilities. Over time, what happened was that we also embedded that in the code. So when properties redeveloped, they had to redevelop to that same standard. So some of the properties on River Road were changed through River Road Renaissance, Town and Country Lanes being one, Abbey's Pizza being another, that are two that quickly come to mind. But others did the 100% on their own or were the result of remodel or complete reconstruction, Starbucks being one, but that's 100% on them. They had to put in all the amenities that we're talking about here.
Because we changed the code and have implemented it, correct?
That is correct. So now this will make sure that all, all properties will have to be redeveloped or developed to the same standard. So we will have those same livable amenities in redevelopment for, in the business sector that we already have in certain areas now.
So if I understand correctly, we're already requiring it and we're, I think we're basically risking saying, go ahead and choose Salem because it's, you know, it's the next door down the street and it's, you know, it's not the same fees, because we have a higher expectation of livability that's already in the code?
Um, if, if a business does a cost analysis and they believe Salem is going to be a better deal for them with their higher property taxes year to year, they're welcome to do the math. I don't think that a one-time investment in the quality of the development of their property is going to have the long-term impact that higher property taxes and higher systems development charges will have on the development of that property if they choose land in Salem. But that is something that the businesses will have to decide. And do I think that businesses that are going to do a cost comparison between Kaiser and Salem are going to say Salem's going to win every time? I don't think so. I think there's also going to be part of the equation, who's their market, what's the niche that they are going to provide, what's the business plan look like? And I think will attract quality, long-term businesses as a result.
Okay. I think, um, I understand your position and it sounds like there's some good discussion that's been had. It's been well thought out. I think it concerns me that as a city, we feel that we need to regulate and impose more fees on businesses. So I, I'll just let that stand. But thank you very much for your explanation.
Counsel Ferrera?
No.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
No.
Noses, hands? So Counsel Anderson, Counsel Ryan. Motion passes, six, two, six, geez.
Five, two.
Five, two.
It's only seven.
There's only seven. Yep. Me and the mou, me and the mouse in my pocket. Maybe it's your mouse. It's your mouse. All right. Great discussion, folks. Appreciate that. Okay. That is going to take us then to administrative action. We're going to take the soccer field at Country Glen Park first up. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawyer?
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor, councilors. At the August 7th, 2017 city council meeting, Mr. Wayne Fry testified before the city council requesting approval to create a soccer field in Country Glen Park. Mr. Fry proposes to create a 40-yard by 80-yard soccer field in the park, as shown on attachment A of the packet, and will purchase and donate the goalposts, nets, balls, line painter, and paint for the field. There's no additional maintenance of the turf area being requested. Mowing, fertilizing, and weed control will be provided by the city, the same as it is now. Mr. Fry will be the primary maintenance person, with the Kaiser Soccer Club committing to providing backup for Mr. Fry. The Salem Kiwanis Club has committed to providing funding to Mr. Fry for the maintenance supplies like paint, nets, et cetera, up to $500 for three years. A small sign will be placed below the park sign, recognizing the donations and efforts for the creation and maintenance of the soccer field. The vision of Mr. Fry is to create a neighborhood, community, practice field that, that is not to be reserved for organized games, but is open for use on a first-come, first-served basis. There's no fiscal impact to the city with this proposal. The staff recommends the city council support the creation of a first-come, first-served neighborhood, community, practice soccer field at Country Glen Park. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. Just, I'm curious how we'll enforce no games on the field versus practice?
Um, we will enforce no, no reservation games. If, if somebody wants to come out and have a pickup game, that's fine. We will not reserve it for organized soccer games.
Understood. Thank you very much.
All right. So it was my understanding, and this question is for our city attorney, that actually a motion is to accept rather than support to, more strongly to?
Accept or approve the proposal. As, as I talked to the mayor before the meeting, we reviewed this and this is an allowed use under the master plan. So we didn't have to go through a master plan, a formal master plan amendment. But since it is a relatively major change within the constraints of the mass, allowed master plan, we thought council should weigh in on it. So the, the motion would be to accept the creation of the first-come, first-served practice soccer field.
And I'd like to invite Mr. Fry to come down and maybe talk to us a little bit about it. And this time, he brought two balls because we're going to have even more fun. And they're very pretty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council, and staff. Um, I want to make the, oh, my name's Wayne Fry. I'm from Kaiser. I've been here for two and a half years. And I love Kaiser and I want to make it even better and contribute to the community. So we've, my idea is to create a soccer field at Country Glen Park.
Well done. Well done.
Forty by 80. It would be a community, neighborhood, practice field, a small enough field to, so regulation games like from other groups would not play there. It's just a community practice. Kids come down with their parents. I, I was asked to create a maintenance backup plan. And so I've done that with the, I've got two parts to it. There's financial part and a physical maintenance. Physical maintenance, I will be primary maintenance on the soccer field. And the Kaiser Soccer Club has agreed to be backup maintenance for a period of three years. And the financial backup, the Salem Kiwanis Club has agreed to sponsor the initial cost of the field. of the field and $500 per year for paint and replacement nets, that type of thing, for a period of three years. That's as long as our board positions last, so that's as far as we can go out. The next board will reevaluate that. So I'd like to build a soccer field as soon as possible, and ask the council to give me a go-ahead on this.
All right.
With these totally cool soccer clubs.
Yes. And I want to thank Wayne and the Salem Kiwanis. I had the opportunity to speak with them at noon today. I appreciate the invitation, and it was a delightful conversation, and I was completely derelict in not thanking them for their very generous contribution to help this soccer field happen in Kaiser. So would you please extend our gratitude for their generosity and in helping this for our kids and families?
I'd be happy to do that. The goal of the Kiwanis International is to improve the world, one child, one community at a time.
Well, I think this is definitely a step in that direction, and it's gratefully received from the Salem Kiwanis Club. Very, very generous. Are there any other questions? Counselor Herrera?
I just want to welcome that because I, I've run into you quite a few times over there now, a couple times, and I'm, I'm curious as to see how that's going to turn out, and I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a good thing. As you know, we kind of walk over there every day, and so I'm kind of keeping an eye on, is there going to be any change in terms of the maintenance and things like that? Right now, we're doing, I'm doing a bunch of pruning over there. I don't know if you've been out there, but, so I'm going to try to clean that up a little bit, but I'm, I think it's going to be a good deal. I'm looking forward to it. So.
There was one question earlier from last month about parking, and I had suggested maybe parking at Gubser Elementary. I would like to retract that. That's, that was actually not a, a good idea. There's additional parking on Horizon Ridge, just around the corner, street parking, so they could park on Park Center, or they could park on Horizon Ridge, and just take Gubser Elementary out of that picture completely.
Sounds like a good plan. Plus, there's plenty of opportunities for kids to ride their bikes over there.
Yes. Oh, and then the, the, both, both of the community partners, the Kaiser Soccer Club and Salem Kiwanis Club, want to have some signings showing that they are contributing to the community and making it better. So it'd be a little, small sign on the bottom of the Country Glen Park sign.
That'll happen.
Absolutely.
All right. We definitely want to make sure that people understand when, when people are generous and donate, that we are not only have thankful attitudes, but let folks know where it came from, but it gives people an opportunity to say, you know what, I want to partner up with that group because they're doing good things.
We do need more volunteers.
Yes, we do. Are there any other questions? Counselor Reed?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you for your initiative on this. I had coached soccer many years ago, and there is a definite lack of practice space, and I just really appreciate you taking the initiative on this, identifying a need, going through and being very thorough as to following through with that, and even more important is not just keeping it to yourself. You embraced other organizations, the Kaiser Soccer Club, the Kiwanis, and let them help with this, help build the community, and I, and I, I just really love that, again, spirit of volunteerism and the, the expression of that, and so thank you very much for your efforts of that.
Thank you, counselor.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Does that mean yes?
Well, we're about to move on the table. Council President Parsons would like to do the honors.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the creation of a first-come, first-served neighborhood, community, practice soccer field at Country Glen Park.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the creation of a first-come, first-served neighborhood, community, practice soccer field at Country Glen Park. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That's a yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and city counselor and staff. I'm going to build it tomorrow morning.
All right. Thank you very much. Goal, that's going to be cool. All right, we'll backtrack now to item 8A, which was the ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.110, Commercial Mixed Use, Amending Ordinance 98-389. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and council. You may remember this item came on in July for a council meeting, and we are coming back for the ordinance. We, in the staff report, I pointed out that the, the motion to direct staff to prepare was for a 450-square-foot sales area for non-fuel-related things. That would be the actual sales floor area, but there was no discussion about the size of the building. In discussions with Safeway, which is the likely applicant for this type of situation, they had indicated that that would be approximately half, and so I put in a provision for a 900-square-foot one. And my apologies on a late change, and it isn't substantive at all, but after talking to the attorney for Safeway, they wanted to make it clear that we were talking about just the sales area for the non-fuel-related, not obviously the whole canopy area. So the copy that I put on the dais is the one that I would like you to look at, and that's on page five of the printed handout. I'm sorry, I just made that change fairly late in the afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to email it to you. It's the exact same idea there under C1. It's a 900-square-foot total, no more than 450 square feet of that would be sales floor area. It's just a changing in the wording to make, make clear what we're talking about. We're not talking about the whole gas station, obviously. So the correct motion would be to adopt the ordinance as amended by the handout.
Okay, as amended. Okay. Are there any questions on the staff report? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Just to be clear, I think I may have asked this before, Shannon, but just to be clear, approving this proposed language would still, is not, they're still going to have to go through the whole planning commission approval process.
Right, and, yeah, thank you, thank you, Counselor Anderson, for bringing that up. It's not planning commission, though, but this is a text change. It's not a quasi-judicial application. Obviously, it's most likely that Safeway would be the only one that would use it. The new wear mart store is outside the restricted area. The Schoolhouse Square physically probably couldn't accommodate it, but even though it looks like it would only apply to Safeway, it really is a text change. What it does do is allows, as a conditional use, and that's, you see the title at, right above all the subsections, it says conditional uses. So we're allowing in that restriction zone the limited ability for a gas station in conjunction with a grocery store or food store, as we call it, but they still would have to go through a conditional use application process, and one of the issues, of course, was the fire district's concerns about traffic analysis, all sorts of indications. So they still have to go through that process, and that is a staff decision, correct, Nate? I haven't done one of those in a long time. So unless there's an appeal, it's a, it's a staff-level decision, but yes, they would have to go through that first.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor, Counselor President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So under 1C1, I thought, I thought the motion was 800 square feet, not, and then the portion, the floor portion was 400 square feet. I thought that's what we voted on.
The original proposal, I shouldn't say original proposal. At one point, Safeway had talked about 400 square feet, but what they submitted right before the council meeting and what the council directed us was 450 square feet. That's, that's what was in their proposal, and that's what council adopted. There was no discussion about the overall size of the building, which is why I raised that issue, which they said was approximately 50% sales area, and the rest of it would be back room and restrooms area, office and store, storeroom and restrooms. Obviously, it's, council can choose to change that if you wish, but, but the motion was to direct staff to come back with an ordinance consistent with Safeway's proposal, and that was what was in their proposal.
Safeway's proposal, talk about?
450.
Of sales floor.
Of sales floor. And, and I think Counselor Parsons is, is saying she was looking at a total of 800.
Right, the floor was 800.
So, I mean, right, and, and I don't know where the 800 came from. Maybe they were talking initially at the hearing about 800, but I know what the plan, oh, I, I know, Counselor Parsons, I was trying to think where you got it, from the planning commission. That was the numbers thrown around at the planning commission meetings. There was just quite a delay because Safeway wasn't ready to come to the council, and so there's quite a delay between the two. At this, at the planning commission hearings, they talked about a total of 800 square feet, 400 and 400. But when they came to council, they, they were requesting to increase it, so that's totally up to council. You can make that change if you wish.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions on the staff information? All right. Counselor President Parsons, do you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve a bill for an ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.110, Commercial Mixed Use, Amending Ordinance 98-389.
As amended.
As amended.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.110, Commercial Mixed Use, Amending Ordinance 98-389, as amended. Discussion. Okay, there's, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community over the last several months about, specifically since the, the first applicant that, for whom this would apply would be Safeway, very likely, and kind of questions about how we got there, whether we didn't allow it in the first place, and how we've gotten here now, and it's been very interesting to hear feedback from the community. I think it kind of reflects on how Kaiser has grown up and changed, and there's a lot of, a lot of discussion, both back positive and negative regarding this. I was the no vote to even reopen this, and I had serious reservations. I still reserve some of those reservations, but I think they will be addressed in the actual application. Some of the concerns I had were included in the conditions, particularly relating to traffic and safety, so I will be able to take another look at that at that time. Mr. Brown?
And I, just to put out there on the floor for you, is part of the concerns were the fire district and the operation, operational safety of the fire district. They will, they will be part of the conditional use review process. So just, so you know, they will be included in that process.
And that, that was a very important addition, I thought, as well, so I'm glad to see that in there. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just to confirm, it sounds like from what you're saying, that that's exactly what Safeway asked for, including the back offices and the sales space, and we're giving, we're, because I'm trying to think future, you know, futuristic, is that, is that number going to be a good number for, in the future for other businesses? Like, is it going to be, I'm not trying to think of just one business, but, you know, are we meeting the needs of multiple businesses to bring future business to Kaiser? So it sounds like in this situation, that's, we're meeting the needs of what Safeway had requested if they, you know, come back to us without everything else, but, but does, you know, are we in agreement that moving forward with other local businesses that, you know, is this something that's going to need to be revisited, or are we, are we, are we adequate for other local businesses bringing them in?
Yes, and, and I'm going to ask Nate to weigh in, but as a practical matter, I don't see this applying anywhere else. So, I mean, I suppose if you really want to get futuristic, if Safeway sold, if Safeway left the market and sold it to a different operator who had a different business model and needed a bigger convenience store, then it might not work for that possible future one, but I, I can't imagine, I mean, I suppose the Kaiser Village could totally redevelop, even though it just, you know, remodeled a few years ago, and add a grocery store in there, but remember that, no, it wouldn't apply there either because it's not, it's not in the restricted zone. So this only applies to the restricted zone area, which is, extends a few blocks north and south from the main intersection. So the only other one it could possibly apply for that I could see would be Roth's, the old Roth, Schoolhouse Square, and physically, that's not, I mean, I don't see how they could accept a gas station there, so I don't see that being a concern.
So it's just limited to that zoning area, it sounds like?
Right.
Okay. Well, yeah, because all the other convenience stores are much larger than that, so I just didn't want to put a, put a negative on something in the future, so thank you.
Thank you. And I said at the outset that it's a prime piece of real estate and the heart of what I believe is kind of our downtown, although we don't have one officially. It's one of our business intersections, and I had always hoped that there'd be some vision toward something more, more intense development that would bring in other businesses, higher volume businesses, or different, more diverse businesses in that area, but it's private property, it's private development, and unless the city has money to invest or incentivize different types of development, which is not something I see in the foreseeable future, I felt that it was important to go ahead and move forward, and I still do. But I did want to clarify, since I was the one no, so I don't really want to reopen this, but here we are. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. See what comes. All right. I'm going to turn the page. That takes us to the consent calendar. Counselor President Parsons, what we've got?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on the consent calendar tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing the finance director to enter into purchase agreement with Traybond Company, Inc. for purchase of sofa's email protection. B is the approval of the August 17th regular session minutes, and C, approval of the August 14th work session minutes.
All right. Are there any polls? Counselor President Parsons?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second? The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, council liaison reports. Counselor Anderson, how about I start with you tonight, sir?
Okey-dokey. You betcha. Let's see here, two things that all, actually, three things, although two are related to one another, just to highlight the last Kaiser Chamber lunch, which I saw a few of y'all at, in varying capacities, Counselor Reed, on August 29th. It was a great event. I was proud to help sponsor it through my company, but just a way to be able to kind of say, you know, salute and say thanks to our, our Kaiser area educators. So I think it's a great way to start the school year, so it was great to be at, and then kind of following up with that is another great hit that they're doing on September 12th, that Tracy noted in the email out to us all, just that they're going to be encouraging members to go and hold their regular monthly lunch meeting at the SKEF, Salem Kaiser Education Foundation Back-to-School Lunch, and Awesome Awards. So, and as a former board member to SKEF, I think that's a great idea, so it's a great event, too. I mean, you know, how can you go wrong, you know, touting and helping toot the horn for our area educators? They're awesome. And then just the, the one meeting that I've got coming up here is Kaiser Chamber Board Meeting on September 6th, and, oh, and then I think I'm going to be subbing for Counselor Parsons Freeman, yeah, yeah, like I said, Counselor Freeman, at the council commission, county commission breakfast later this month. Thank you.
After that, it's next week, is it not? All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Herrera?
Yes, first I want to apologize to this council for my absence in the last meeting. I had a little confusion in my return, went down to San Francisco to watch the Giants. Some of our guys that were former Volcanos are Miguel Gomez and Dan Slania, who have both made it to the big leagues. That was really exciting. I want to say one thing, I missed out on the eclipse thing, but I got to, witnessed that at Volcano Stadium, and that was a pretty cool event, and I'm really proud of our community, Kaiser, for all the, I didn't get to go out there too much, but I was on this side, and I know there was, there was a lot of activity, and it was great, and I got a compliment from a guy I met in a plane, back from San Francisco, who lives in Vancouver and happened to be in the area, and he says he's really proud of our community and thought it was pretty cool what we do, you know? He liked it. He had never been in the Kaiser area, Salem always, but anyway, also, also, August was a busy month in terms of some of the work we did. We, my wife and I volunteered for the Little League World Series softball, so that was a lot of fun, and also, we had the, well, by the way, I got to go to the, one of the, Patrick Lam concert over there with, and those guys do, Clinton knows, I can't say enough about the, the work they put out there, and they're always improving now, they've got the lights in there, and it's, it's a very fun environment, and really enjoyed that. Let's see here, also, we have, today's birthday school, so we're back at Kennedy, and I'm going to be there one more year, I think, if I can make it. Also, let's see, the last thing I was going to say was the, I don't know if I can remember. Oh, I want to say happy birthday to my daughter, Birdie. Oh, I want to say happy birthday to my daughter, Birdie. So, today, it just happened to come on her birthday. And again, thanks again for forgiving, forgive me for not being the last council. I think there's only three that I ever missed, and both of those are out of town, and so, who's counting? Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you so much, and good luck with the school year. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received a postcard, and I meant to bring it tonight, but it was from one of our people who participated in the eclipse event at Kaiser Rapids Park, thanking us for a job well done, and cherishing the T-shirt that will always remind her of the Kaiser eclipse. So, she just wanted to say thank you for that, so I thought I'd pass that on. I have recovered, so that's a good thing. So, that's a good thing. I didn't have anything else coming up, other than the recovery. But coming up next week, I have Planning Commission on Wednesday. Of course, we have the Parks Tour on Monday night with the Parks Board. We meet here at 5:45. On Thursday morning will be the County Commissioner's Breakfast, and it'll be Councilor Ryan Anderson and myself at Sherry's. If anybody has any agenda items, please bring those forth to me before that meeting, would be greatly appreciated. And I will be leaving on the 16th. I will miss next council meeting as I am flying to Europe. So, just wanted to relay that, or, and rub it in, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, because you don't have kids going back to school. That's right. All right, let's begin back to school. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just kind of wanted to reiterate, Councilor Anderson's account of the Chamber Lunch for the educators, and he was not only a representative of the sponsor, but also a keynote speaker. And so, thank you very much for that, and thanks for your efforts with that. And it was just a very excellent event. As a teacher, I really felt the appreciation of the community. That's one of the reasons that I've loved teaching in Kaiser and being part of McNary for now, my 17th year, is just this part, the community support that we feel. And we even got Superintendent Perry to refer to us as the Kaiser Salem School District.
Yes, she did. She does that once a while.
Well, she does it when it's necessary, which is all that matters. So, that was, that was great. So, also, a big thank you to the Chamber, Danielle Bethel and Nathan Bauer did a lot of work with that, too, and Case Catering, which is again, you know, just is part of the community, and that was a really special event, and I really appreciate that the Chamber puts that on every year. So, it was a school start today, but at the middle schools and high schools, we only had freshmen and sixth graders. And it was a very successful day at McNary. One of the things that really makes that a great day is that we have Celtic starters, which are the 10th, I should let you talk about this, Sam.
I actually was going to say.
Okay, I will leave that for you, then, because that was a great day. So, anyway, you get to say more about that. So, just as a reminder, with school starting, we still have the, the no organization collecting donations for the McNary Closet, or the Celtic Closet, and keep those coming in. We really appreciate those, and those are put to good use. And if you have any supplies you need donated to any of your, or you would like to donate to any of the schools, the counselors will, again, make sure that those are put to good use. This Saturday, we have Band Day coming up, and every second Saturday of every year, the band, McNary Band, will be going around collecting cattle, bottles and cans, and cash donations. And this is the big fundraiser of the year for that. So, that is exciting. Just kind of on a personal level, my goal is to get a lot of student, or to fill all the student liaison positions on the various city committees. And so, I will be making my efforts at McNary High School, but also, I'd like to invite the homeschool kids and the private school kids, and any youth in Kaiser who are interested in serving on these committees to contact me, and we will get you started in that process. Or you could do it yourself. You can find that information on the Kaiser.org website. So, that's under committees and that section of that. So, anyway, that's what I have.
I'm looking forward to that, by the way. I think having a strong youth voice only strengthens our, the information we receive, but also opportunity to listen to the next generation. So, thank you. Council Freeman?
Okay, I don't have a whole lot either, but as everyone says, school started, so please watch out for all the children that are walking, students, young, young students starting out for the first time, and
New drivers.
And new drivers, and the sun glaring in your eyes and all of that. Just be really mindful of everyone that's out there, and probably anxious, I'm sure, to get to school tomorrow. So, and welcome, Sam, by the way. I had the opportunity on the volunteer coordinating committee, when Sam came and spoke to the group, and he was here a long time, and he had some great ideas, so looking forward to you spending the year with us. For next week, we will resume West Kaiser Neighborhood Association on the 14th, which is Thursday at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Prior to that, we have the Traffic Safety Pedestrian Bike Ways Committee at 6:00. I will not be here on Monday, September 18th. Unfortunately, I will not be traveling to Europe, but I am at a work event, so I will not be in attendance that evening. I know.
I'm sure you are.
Sorry, I have a work thing. But we do have several openings, and I would like to share those with everyone. So, we do have three vacancies on the Budget Committee, and so, their responsibility is to assist the city council in the examination and analyzing of the proposed budgets. We meet in May of each year, so it's, it's a great commitment. It is a commitment in May, and usually, a couple other meetings throughout the year. Kaiser Points of Interest, there is one vacancy. The committee meets on the fourth Thursday of each month at 6:00 p.m., and this committee helps to establish, was established, excuse me, was established to identify and authenticate and memoral, wow, memorialized sites of interest located in the Kaiser area. And this group has done some amazing things. You'll see signs at parks. Most recent is the flood pools down at Kaiser River Rapids Park, and the years, it's pretty amazing to look at those. The Parks Advisory Board has three vacancies. This board meets on the second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 p.m. The Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee has three vacancies, and they meet on the second Thursday of each month, and we talk everything about traffic safety, whether it's vehicles, whether it's bicycles, safe routes to school, you know, we're looking at any thing. We talk about bicycle friendly, things like that. The Stormwater Advisory Committee has one vacancy, and that committee meets when needed, and those are used, those meetings are usually held during a lunchtime, usually 11:30 to 1:00. And again, we have the youth liaison, so we are anticipating lots of youth to get involved. Most importantly, the applications are open now, and they need to be received by Wednesday, November 8th at 5:00 p.m. to be considered for the November 16th meeting. And all of those opportunities are posted on our website as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Ryan?
Thank you. So, next week's a super busy week, but just a couple, a couple shout outs. First of all, the Volcanos ended their season, and it was such a great season for them, even though it wasn't a huge winning season. I think that the amount of fun that was had and the families that attended it was exciting to see, and I really, I just always love the games and all the work that they've put into that. So, congratulations on their, ending their season. It was a winning weekend for McNary football, first game, and that was exciting. You know it's fall when you get to hear the football, you know, cheers across the, across the city. And so, of course, not only McNary won, but Ducks had the biggest win at Autzen Stadium. Congratulations to the Ducks. And Beavers pulled one out barely, but we pulled it, it's a win. We'll take it. And I also, I have a table for the SKEF luncheon, and so, if anybody would like to join me, I have room, and I would love to have you and Kaiser represented, so please let me know. And then, this Saturday is the final concert at the Kaiser Rapids Park, which is JFK, and they, they really pack them in, and they're a great 80s, you know, good old McNary rock band is what they are, so. At any rate, and I just want to, just one last shout out to all of the first responders. I know we have Kaiser out in a lot of areas in the state, and, you know, our prayers, of course, are with them, but I don't think people realize how hard our first responders are working right now, on a city level, locally, and, and reaching out into our local, other neighboring communities, so my prayers go out to them as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. So, now we get to go to our youth counselor, Hernandez.
Sam.
Sam. And would you just briefly introduce yourself for the folks who weren't listening in when you came and were appointed? And then, apparently, there's a program that you'd like to talk about, which, Celtic starters?
My name is Samuel Hernandez. I've lived in Kaiser for the majority of my life. I go to McNary High School. I am a senior.
Ooh.
So, a big, exciting year. I actually have to worry about college now, so that, that's exciting. As this is my first meeting, I didn't get an opportunity to speak about a couple Saturdays ago, McNary Blue Day, our sixth annual Blue Day. It was a great Saturday, enjoying the sun with the community. It was an opportunity to kick off our fall sports, so we were able to see our boys and girls in blue, performing on our beautiful turf field. It was also a great opportunity to fundraise for things such as the senior grad party, so that was a great opportunity. I feel like the 50/50 raffle walked away with about $200 cash, so that was exciting. So, school did start today for freshmen. My, my little brother went there, and I wasn't one of the Celtic starters, as Council Reed was touched on, but I think that was a very exciting opportunity for student leaders at McNary High School and our community to come together to kickstart the future of our freshman Celts, to show them the ropes, to show them areas in McNary that didn't otherwise know. So, for my brother and for youth throughout Kaiser, a very great opportunity to bond with maybe older children, to enjoy McNary High School together. Council Reed also touched on September 9th, the McNary Band Day. I will read the blurb that they have on their website, just to be concise. Band students will visit your Kaiser area home. You can provide them with recyclable cans and bottles, or leave your recyclable cans and bottles in a bag labeled "for McNary Band" by your front door. Alternatively, drop off recyclable cans and bottles at the McNary High School parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 6:30. And they also accept cash donations. So, except, or, help our McNary band.
Fabulous.
Good job.
I will, welcome. We're delighted to have you with us this year, and as a former orchestra kid, my sister was a band kid, I was, I love our sports, but our music kids are extremely important, right, Council Anderson? And we want to support the young people who are also very, very committed and work extremely hard in the music programs, and also bring home tremendous accolades and awards in regional and state competitions. So, this Saturday, let's make it happen for our musicians. Thank you so much. I just have a couple things to add. We, I met with some folks from Habitat for Humanity. Most of you probably know that Two More Houses, completing a little development that's just off of Windsor Island Road, those houses are now under construction. And we have an opportunity, if we would like, to volunteer for one of the build days. I have some dates that are, that they have openings, and I know most of us have the Monday through Friday jobs, but there are a couple of Saturdays. I'm going to have Tracy send them out in an email to see if we can get a few of us together to spend some time out on the build site, if we're able. I know that not everybody can, and life is what it is, but on Saturday, September 23rd, and Saturday, October 7th, they have some shifts available. So, I'll send an email out and see if we would like to do that. A few years ago, the first house on that street, we had a Kaiser City Council Community or Build Day. We did a couple of them, as a matter of fact, and I seem to recall, Council Walsh and Callier working on a fence or something. Yeah, building that fence along the backyards. The stability it brings to the families who inhabit those homes, the students who live there are more likely to graduate on time, the, the families, the parents become committed to not only just making it from day to day, but to really projecting out for a future for themselves and their families. Habitat has been a fabulous community partner in our region, in the city of Kaiser, so I'd be excited if we could spend some time out there, let folks know about Habitat, along with other great organizations that help provide stable housing, long-term solutions for families to have a better future. I also had a chance to go to Coffee with Gator and Denise with Colleen Bush, who was here with Salem Kaiser Transit. We had some fabulous conversations about all things Kaiser. Always welcome the opportunity to sit down and visit with folks over coffee. My next coffee with Kathy will be not this coming Saturday, but Saturday, the 16th, at Mommy and Maddie's at 1:00 to 3:00. Anybody's welcome to join us. Coffee's not required, but good conversation is definitely a plus. So, you talked about the concert this Saturday, the Band Day. On Thursday, I've got MWAAC, which is the Midlandhammit Area Commission on Transportation, is coming up, and we also will have a 9/11 Remembrance at Kaiser Fire next Monday, and I believe it's 6:30, 6:30 in the morning, out in front of the Kaiser Fire Station. This has been a remembrance that has happened consistently since 2002, one year after the 9/11 events, and it's been a tremendous opportunity to pause, be thankful, and to reflect, and remember the sacrifices of so many people that day who laid their lives on the line for others. So, I will be there, and I encourage everybody in the community to come next Monday, 6:30 a.m. at Kaiser Fire District. We have the SEDCOR Awards Luncheon coming up next Thursday, the 14th, that's the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, and I think most everybody knows by now, and if you haven't, that's because you were probably busy that, this weekend with other Volcanos or the State Fair or something, or maybe back to school shopping, I don't know. But most people have now heard that Amazon is coming to Mill Creek. That's going to be a huge investment, jobs, over 1,000 jobs, 1,400 jobs will be coming to, to Mill Creek through Amazon. Construction jobs in creating that facility is going to complete the vast majority now of the Mill Creek area. That's huge for our local economy, and I want to congratulate SEDCOR, the state of Oregon, Salem, and the other partners that were involved in bringing that project to this announcement stage. Looking forward to construction. I will be at the Bike Repair Station Dedication, which is also on the 14th, and I would like to join in with everybody else, saying, school's starting for everybody tomorrow. Plan a little more time to get to work. We got spoiled this summer because there weren't all that many cars on the road. Hey, folks, they're back. Take your time. Council Anderson?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Can we go back just for a little bit? I'm having problems tonight, apparently. Apologize. Yeah, something like that, yeah. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out, with all the talk about football, and neglected to mention the McNary Youth Football, weather permitting, fire permitting kicks off this weekend, Saturday, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Practice tonight was canceled because of the air quality. And then, also, I will not be at the September 18th meeting either.
Okay, we're down to three, we're down three.
Do we have a quorum?
We do still have a quorum, so that would mean Council Herrera, myself, Council Reed, and Council Ryan. So, if anything happens to either, any of the four of us, we will not have quorum, and I cannot remember a time this has happened.
How exciting.
Okay, on for the history books, so.
Seven o'clock for 9/11.
Seven o'clock for 9/11, thank you, thank you, Bob. So, good, we get to sleep in that little bit more. So, next Monday at 7:00. I'll be there early, though, so I can get, get in place. All right, so, folks, if anything happens, we need to know, because then we're going to have a quorum issue, and we'll need to post notice. Okay? With that, then I will go to the City Manager and to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim? Chief T.
Just to remind people that the distracted driving law goes into effect October 1st, so you'll want to take this time to buy some kind of device to hold your phone in your car, to avoid holding it in your hand. Just a reminder that it's unlawful to hold it in your hand, even if you're not using it. And I mention that because the first offense is a fine, the second offense is a steeper fine, and the third offense is a crime punishable with a minimum, minimum fine of $2,000 and time in jail. So, it's not something to be trifled with. Kaiser, of course, didn't make this law. This came from the state. Just reminding people, buy your hands-free devices.
I'm going to be speechless about that. Phil?
Very happy.
Very happy my vehicle already has a hands-free device. Just one thing, we want to remind the council and the public, the Big Toy will be closing Friday, this Friday, September 8th, until around October 15th, for the removal of the wood chips and the insulation of the rubberized surfacing. We have a big group of volunteers coming out Saturday, the 9th, to assist in removing the chips, all 600 cubic yards of them. They...we hope to get them all done in one day. We'll see how that goes. And then, as soon as we can finish getting the rest of them out of there, the contractor will move in and start placing rock and get working on the surfacing. So, that's all I have.
What time Saturday?
Yeah, I believe they're gonna start about 8:00. I haven't gotten that confirmed yet, but I believe around 8:00.
8:00 Kaiser Rapids Park, and bring gloves, wheelbarrows.
Shovels, scoop shovels.
Where are they disposing of the bark chips right now? Where are they putting them?
We are gonna put them in a big pile between the Big Toy Parking Lot and the Orchard on the north side of the parking lot, because we're gonna use those as much as we can in other parks. Remove the old chips in other parks and take these newer ones and put them in their place. So...
Very good. Council Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you remind us of the date for the Parks Meeting that we're doing the discussion?
Tour?
Not the tour. Don't we have a Town Hall Discussion coming up?
We have...the Parks Board will have...
On the 12th.
September 12th?
Yes.
September 12th at 6:00, right here. Council Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, Bill, you're the person who I want to direct this praise towardwards, but my wife was mentioning to me the other day how awesome job that was done laying that pavement down on Shimawa Lock Haven.
Lock Haven?
Yeah. She just was...she...actually, she was riding with my...our 13-year-old son, and he made a comment about it, and just the way...the whole process and everything, just the speed and the quality was really well done. So, I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. I'll pass on the contract. They did a very nice job with that. It was night work, and they came in and did a lot of work every night they were in town. And the finished product is very nice, and I will share that with them. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Just wanted to let the council know that we are still progressing on our two grants. We have the IGA has been back and forth across the ping-pong table to attorneys and such. And I think we have got all the details worked out on that. So, you'll be seeing that on your council agenda. And that's for the education outreach. That's the cost of growth Town Hall Meeting that we're preparing for. The other grant, our Kaiser Revitalization Plan, is still in the process of negotiation with the contract with the vendor. We expect to see an IGA, a draft IGA, coming to us fairly soon on that. We anticipate, we hope, that that project, the revitalization project, will happen before the end of the year. The education outreach project will be sometime after the start of the next year. So, it's still, still working through the process.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Council Herrera?
Yes, I almost forgot to give kudos to the LDS Church where they've gone beyond their doing on our community lunches, dinners, excuse me, at our church at St. Edwards. And LDS Church has been there several times, and they've done a great job. And I wanted to say one thing about, that I forgot. First of all, Band Day, I really emphasize how hard those kids work, and try to support them Saturday. This is the 20th anniversary of McNary's first of two state championships, 1997, and hopefully, they'll do some kind of event October. Tom Smyt's gonna be back on the 5th, hopefully, of October, so we're gonna try to coordinate a game and see if we can get some kind of event for that. Also, McNary plays, by the way, they were...they did a great job opening season against North. And I'd like to see strong support for the Friday's game. And I challenge everybody to show up and wear in the blue. It's gonna be at South Salem, and that's gonna be a great game. So, come on and support our kids. They're a good group this year, and that...they're fun to watch. And I just want to see our community back to that level again, and I think we're going that way. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. I do have one item under written communications. I received this note, Mayor Clark. "I would like to thank your employees of Kaiser for a great job that they have done. Lieutenant Andrew Copeland, Tyler Wampler, Shane Witham, Ben Crosby, and Ken..." Oh, Girloff. And he's not an employee. He's with the Neighbor Association. "Thank you for all the effort, Mark Napier." And I believe he's had a neighborhood issue. He and I did chat on the phone about that, and he has really felt that city staff has been helpful. And even though it's a little complicated getting that neighborhood situation handled, he's really appreciated the attention to that. So, I want to read that for you. "And folks who do have issues regarding tall grass and weeds, you know, code enforcement, please get ahold of the city. This is a very busy season, as you might imagine, for code enforcement, but everything does get logged in, and he gets after them, and he does a great job reaching out and educating people on maybe that, you know, that pile of weeds isn't a great idea, or maybe we need to trim that back." Helping people understand what it's gonna take to be a good neighbor and be more preventative as much as he can. So, I really appreciate his efforts. Okay, so, with that, I've got Agenda Input, September 11th at 5:45 will be the Parks Tour. Woohoo! Always enjoy that. So, if people want to follow along with us, please go onto our website. It has the parks that we'll be visiting. You're welcome to meet us at those parks, or follow along in your own vehicles. We do not provide transportation to the parks. And then, we will begin the tour around 5:45. On September 18th at 7:00 p.m., we will meet in regular session. Everyone needs to remain healthy. Roland? And then, we will meet again October 2nd, 2017, in a 7:00 in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, it is 8:38, and we are adjourned.